So are we gonna have a quorum when Charlie leaves?
Think so.
Five? We need six.
Yeah.
Charlie's leaving.
Charlie's leaving fifteen minutes.
The delegation.
Five's enough, right?
Oh yeah, that's right.
We're good.
It's important.
Yeah, we'll have five. So we got five.
That's why I called.
So we're all set?
Okay, we'll do that.
I should be representative off the run, not have to get into politics. You could be Charlie Junior.
You could be a representative. You could be a Republican.
Oh, we have a request for continuance on New Hope Drive.
Yes.
Okey dokey. All right, well, at 6:30, I'll call this meeting of the planning board to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Charlie Sinclair?
Here.
Sarah Jenna?
Here.
David Broughton?
Yeah.
Peter Bowns?
Here.
Mike Delavickia?
Here.
And Peter Burnett.
Thank you very much. And staff present? Go ahead, say it for the record.
Dean Trufedden and Rob Morrow with Kalina Graham doing the recording.
Thank you so much. Does anybody wish to discuss the minutes from the last meeting? Any changes or additions? If not, could we have a motion to accept the January 8th minutes, please?
I make a motion, we accept the January 8th minutes as written.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? Second. Mr. Sinclair, any discussion?
Point of order.
Yes?
You don't really need a motion to accept the minutes. There aren't any objections, you can just accept them.
Minutes are accepted then, David.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Just saying.
You're good at just saying. All right, we have a continued public hearing. It's on, oh, by the way, before we get started, if anyone is here on the two application acceptances, one is for 903 Union Ave. That application has been withdrawn, if you're here on that one. And we have a request for continuance pending on New Hope Drive, just so you'll know. It won't be too long before we get there, I guess. Okay, so we're looking at, it's PL 2018-0104 SP. 435 Union Avenue, the Presidential Cottages in Woodside Pavilion, Taylor Home. The continued, the public hearing was continued from January 8th for third-party review reports. And I guess we're gonna get an update on those now from the applicant. Yes, David?
I have a disclosure. I live at 35 Prospect Street. I'm not technically in a butter, but my neighbors are. And Taylor Home, I consider a neighbor also. And I'm disclosing that, so that if anybody has an issue about that, they can address it now.
Your name may have come up at the last meeting. One of your neighbors may have mentioned it. In a favorable.
I like my neighbors, we get along well. We get along well.
It's a nice little neighborhood.
They're very good at fooling me.
Okay. Hi.
Good evening. Phil Stacks, Steve Smith and Associates, representing the Taylor community tonight.
Evening, Bill.
At the last hearing, we went through the plans pretty thoroughly, I thought, for drainage issues and utilities, et cetera. We were in the process of having an application into the state of New Hampshire DES for an alteration of terrain permit. We've since received that for the drainage and erosion control portion of the project. We also had comments from a neighbor where we were addressing a swale issue and have added that and included that in our plans. There were a few other items that came up in the review process also with the third-party review of the drainage at the town level, city level. And we addressed those comments also in a letter back to the Department of Public Works and also reviewed it with planning. I believe we resolved those issues also.
Is that the Lorario letter?
What's that?
That you're talking about? Am I pronouncing it right, the letter from the company called Lorario?
Yes, that's correct, yep.
Okay.
I can go through those revisions, they were very minor in nature, but I've certainly helped to go through that, to address some of that and recap, if you will, some of the revisions.
Sure.
The two projects that we're dealing with, one is the Presidential Cottages, larger, six-unit area. It is west, actually north of the existing Woodside facility. And then on the south side of that, of Woodside, is the proposed pavilion area. I'll look at, present the Presidential Cottage portion first. As you recall, we had drainage elements around all the units that captured the roof water and separated that from the paved areas that all drained down into and went through a detention-infiltration pond that ultimately drains into the existing pond we have today. We've rerouted a sewer line that was initially going down Prospect Street or Coal Street. We were hoping to tie to that and found that that was not viable. We changed that connection and come out and tie into our own system and it will go through the existing Taylor community system that is today. As part of the comments, we've added all the snow storage areas to and around the edges of the road, out here at the end of Kinsman and at the end of the new proposed road. We've also added a catch basin on the other drainage sheet to capture any of that water that is coming from snow melt. That was a condition that DES commented on while we were reviewing the project. Water, municipal water is available, municipal sewers, I've mentioned. Electric will be served coming down on the opposite side where the sidewalk is.
That will be underground, right? The electric?
What's that? Yes, everything's underground, yes. The grade of the road is not very much, there is not significant change, very slight cuts, slight fills. We're staying pretty close to existing natural terrain in that particular area for the road. The units themselves will have to be cut into the slope a little bit in some areas. As I mentioned, the added drainage is this section of culvert and another catch basin to handle that additional stormwater area that we're proposing to show stormwater, snow This was the sheet that was presented to show the diversion swale and a treatment swale on the end of it that collects nearly all the upslope water draining at the neighbor at tax map 371-50-46. That will alleviate any drainage going onto their property from outside, certainly. That's included in the plans. We've also added some buffered filtered tree elements to enhance the buffer along that A profile change slightly to add that additional catch basin on the end and has a, I think I mentioned it last time, but we'll have an oil-water separator in the last catch basin in the system before the water that sheaves off the roads and the paved surfaces gets into the pond. So should any element, floatables, or possible oil contaminations, that'll get trapped before it enters the pond. That's the profile of the sewer, that's showing the different tie connection point internally within the system, so we're not going off-site with that. Water profiles. These are the details that show some of the elements that were added, changes we added, some notes relative to preparation of the eve-roof eve rain garden areas as well as the stormwater pond itself. DES wanted specific notes relative to that construction, so we've added that. And also, in the area of the sidewalk, we added a three-foot reverse slope section for snow storage. Should that melt on the backside of the sidewalk, it'll drain across and not go over and outside of the scope of the drainage area with the catch basins in the street. The drainage system was designed to maintain or actually decrease the runoff from the site, both in peak runoff for the two, 10, 50-year storm events, as well as the volume was also reduced in all those storms. The lighting plan, it shows that the lighting effects of the proposed lighting will stay within the confines of the existing property per the local regulations. It meets the dark skies requirement for the town. And we've shown that in this plan here. We've also provided a landscaping plan that shows buffering of the downslope neighboring properties as well as refurbishing an area that will separate the existing facility from the proposed six new units. The second portion of the site is the pavilion area on the south side. Today, the existing facility is basically used as a parking, overflow parking area for the facility as well as the grass area today. It has an existing detention pond that was installed for the Woodside Pavilion, another detention pond on the south side. This one-acre site is proposed to add some additional parking areas as well as a pavilion site for outdoor, an open pavilion. It's open-sided, not year-round, only seasonal use in good weather. This plan shows stormwater elements highlighted in green. The green in this particular area is porous pavement. We have a little bit of rain garden area adjacent to the existing utility shed that we have on-site. It also has a handicap bathroom in it and also a stormwater infiltration trench on the south side. Elements inside the facility will be bocce ball courts, shuffleboard courts, and some horseshoe areas, and a small putting green on this side. Nice area with some covered pavilion exterior, just roofed areas that are all open for people to sit and watch. Runoff from that particular site also was reduced in all those storms that we mentioned, the two, 10, and 50-year storm events. Utilities will be providing will be a water line, it's seasonal, to provide service to the utility building as well as to the pavilion itself. That'll have to be drained seasonally. There's also a electrical line that will come in and feed that and backfeed into that and an underground propane storage tank here to provide some grill, outdoor grilling availability under the pavilion. That also has a detailed landscape plan as well as a lighting plan that we went through last time. That has not changed any from the previous submission. And then a details plan. One of the changes that came out of the review at the state level as well as the review by the local third-party review was we added underdrain to our porous pavement to provide an overflow aspect that both the state and the third-party reviewer were commenting what happens in case it backs up. That's a common thing, I had just left it off because I felt it was gonna be very porous in here anyway, but it's like having a little bit extra, so we've added it. It has a pretty detailed landscaping plan showing several trees around the buffered areas as well as enhancing the existing slopes that will be generated as the area is constructed and finished off. After any answer, any questions you might have?
No, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah. What are you gonna do with the road, or I'll call it the road, the path, that comes right at the intersection of Prospect and Coal?
Prospect and Coal?
The gated, isn't that the gated entrance there? There's two gated entrances, one to the left that goes right into the Taylor Home Woods, I'll call them, and one to the right that goes to the road that leads to the Taylor Home itself. So I'm curious about two roads now, I assume that the road you're gonna use to enter?
This road here, Dave, right here? That's the emergency access on?
No, 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 no. Straight up from Prospect?
Yeah, this road here.
That road.
Yeah. Well, that's a byway that's owned by the Taylor community. I'm not sure what they're planning on doing, there's no gate really shown on this.
There is a gate there.
Oh, there is a gate there?
There is a gate.
I'm sorry.
I'm just curious if you know what the Taylor Home plans to do with that?
I personally don't know.
Is there gonna be any access from Prospect Street or from Coal Street to this project?
We're not proposing any, no. Initially, we were thinking of bringing the sewer down that road, Dave, but we found it was not a viable connection, so we tied it in this direction here.
It would also be expensive, because you'd have to do something about the streets.
Does Prospect extend up between two of the units on that map? Do we go back to that previous?
No.
It doesn't, it should, though, paper it looks like it does.
No, Prospect is, you can see, Prospect is at the bottom of that.
Oh, okay.
That graph, and it runs that way.
Okay, what's the one perpendicular that goes up?
That's Coal.
Does it extend past Prospect?
Coal, Coal turns in, turn, take a wicked left on Coal and get onto Prospect Street. But if you go straight from Coal, you go down that pathway that's depicted there, it's kind of a road. It's got some nice brick walls on.
It's a paper road, basically, right?
Yeah, it's got some nice brick walls on it.
Brick or stone?
Stonewalls. What did I say? Brick. Stonewalls.
So it's an old right-of-way of some sort?
And I assume that the entrance way is gonna be on the current path that they kind of plow during the winter? You know what I'm talking about?
They do have a, there is an existing gravel area that is, there's a trail that's not official, certainly, a pathway that's in there. It'd be very close to that. It's actually, that pathway you're talking about is in this location right here, that's suggesting today. It'd be close to that, but it certainly will come in at a different location, and that will be extinguished and.
Since I'm familiar with the area and there's a, as you come on, as you come off of Kinsman Road and you walk along that parking lot there? There's two entrances into the woods?
Yep.
To a path that goes from Prospect, from Prospect and Coal, all the way to the back of the property to the Guilford Line?
Yeah, right through here, yep.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, that's part of the walking trail they have on campus. They intend to keep.
Keep that walking trail?
As much of it as possible, I think. I'm not sure if they'll keep the same scenario with those units available, they may, you know.
They may make different entrances?
They may change some things, but they will have, they will have walking trails internally, yes. So you might have to get to it from a different point maybe to get there, but they do, they will still have trails in the Taylor community.
Good.
That I do know.
Dean, did you have some?
I do, I do. Bill, the, where you've added the drainage swale?
Yes.
I see that you still have at the end of Kinsman Drive there that there's still a note there that there's snow storage there?
Yes.
That's gonna continue?
Yes. And the reason for that is that that location is 100 feet allowance for the treatment aspect of that snow would technically meet the requirement for being treated by a treatment swale if you have 100 feet of it.
Okay.
So that's the location that they had it over here. It would shortcut the, it would shortcut the routing of that technically treated stormwater.
So is the intention of that snow storage area to basically be what gets pushed off of the streets in that immediate vicinity? It's not intended to be snow that's trucked there from other parts of the project?
I certainly don't believe that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Rob?
Is the intent of the project to do all the excavation and work before the houses are built?
I think so, yes.
So that's gonna be two years?
They wanna have it in as soon as possible, so.
Because the thing says February 2021 on the application.
That's something new, I haven't, oh, oh, for the application, they've already applied for that, wow.
That's how long they have to complete it?
Right.
Your approval would be for two years. They don't have to take the full two years to do it.
That's the maximum.
I envision they'll probably have most of the site worked on by the end of the summer, and they'll be building units probably.
This year?
In the fall, yeah. They intend it to go draft, leave some.
Do we know that?
Yeah, I've been told that's scheduled.
Probably a waiting list for those houses.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we're opening the public hearing. So at, there we see, at 6:52 PM, we're gonna open the public hearing. Are there any butters here that would like to be heard? Any butters? Come on up, come on up, ma'am. If you could just say your name and address for the record?
Susan Merritt, 35 Coal Street. There are, the three shrubs are right where the evergreens are gonna be planted. So I would imagine they're gonna have to be removed.
I don't know what shrub you're talking about.
There, there's three shrubs that are in the clearing of my yard, but they're on the Taylor Home property. And if they could be removed, that would, that would be good. I mean, they're right where the evergreens are for the treatment swale.
You're saying that they would probably have to be removed in order to build the swale?
Well, they're right where the evergreens are. I doubt they're, they're gonna wanna leave those shrubs there.
I don't think our intent is to disturb anything other than where we have to disturb the swale. We were asked to put some evergreens to filter and help strengthen the buffer because we're putting the swale there, so those would be added into that area. I don't think we had an intent on purposely removing stuff that doesn't have to be removed.
If it doesn't show on the plan, it doesn't mean it's actually not there.
Correct.
Yeah, no, they're there.
We've located a tree out there, no.
Right.
Well, we, we can, I guess we can figure that out in the spring. One thing I would like is if you could delineate the area of the snow storage on Kinsman and just so we can have the area shown.
We have delineated it on the plan.
Is there a line around the snow storage area?
No.
Or can you, I know Bill said you have to kind of center it on the swale, but.
Well, I think that's a little restrictive. I mean, we've shown an area where they're gonna plow it, you know.
Yeah, I just. I just don't wanna have.
That's why we put the swale up there was so that we could plow the snow there that we've always plowed there and protect the abode.
I think it's the intent of the applicant to improve the existing drainage as it pertains to your property and all the other abutting properties.
Absolutely.
Where possible.
Right, I mean, the Taylor Home is a good neighbor, and I just, I think it would just be easier for all of us if this, if there was a note that the, there's not gonna be any snow storage on the dirt part of the, the dirt part of the road.
They have to plow that road for emergency access, they don't leave snow there.
Right.
I'm not sure what.
Well, they have, they have in years past.
Well, it's their emergency access, I don't know why they would leave snow in the middle of it. It's my understanding that they clear it and keep it clear. I just spoke with them about that.
Okay, those were my, those are my concerns.
So I wanna, I wanna understand what your concerns are, so in terms of bushes that are there, or the shrubs, or whatever you wanna call them, and in terms of the snow storage area, what exactly are your concerns? Because I'm not sure.
I mean, if they, if they wanna leave the shrubs there, then I guess that's okay. I mean, I'm, I'm sure it'll, it will look better once they do all the planting, so.
What is this buffer gonna look like? Do we know? Do we have a certain idea? What is this buffer that you're gonna put in, the pine trees or whatever, what's it gonna look like?
We're just proposing to plant seven or eight evergreens there that can grow up and spread out a little more to give a better, a little more of a buffer from that. It's a very shallow swale.
It is.
Yeah, it's, how deep is it really? A foot and a half? Foot and a half deep? It's not like it's this big trench, and we're just, the planning board asked us to consider putting some evergreens along there, six or seven, and we agreed to do that.
It was based on a butter's comments, I think, that those additions were made to the plan.
Well, it could have been, but we had a meeting with the planning department after, and they asked us if we'd have that.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any other butters would like to be heard? Sure, come on up.
Good evening, Jeff Cludier, 40 Prospect Street. I just had a couple of questions for the engineers for clarification, if I could.
Go for it.
Could you describe the, the snow storage features you were talking about along the new road? I hadn't seen the plans.
Yep, they're actually, it's gonna be along the side of the road, most of the, most of the areas are stored along the sides of the road and on the backside of the sidewalk, because they'll of course plow the sidewalk. And then probably, you know, likely there'll be a little bit out on the other side that is shown on here. We've shown this one.
So what was the feature related to the sidewalk that you were talking about? I apologize, I couldn't bring up the plans on my iPad. Brought up everything but the plans.
Yeah, I'm having that problem here in mind, too.
It's a continuation of the sidewalk, typical itself. Jeff?
Yep.
With the same slope going back three, three additional feet.
So that's to pitch it back to the street?
Yeah, that's correct, yep. So that'll all stay in the street.
All right. My concern was between there and my property, there's so much leaf litter, I don't think anything would infiltrate. That was my concern there.
That's gonna pretty well buffer that.
Okay. I, like I said, I couldn't bring up the plan, so I wasn't sure what it would actually design.
That was the attitude.
Then regarding the buffer along that road.
Landscape buffer?
Landscape buffer, yep. I appreciate the fact that the Taylor Home's gonna put those in. I was just wondering what size those trees and. Landscape buffer, yep. I appreciate the fact that the Taylor Homes is gonna put those in. I was just wondering what size those trees and bushes are and when they would actually be an effective, uh, visual buffer.
Sure. Um, well, to start, uh, the trees themselves, uh.
Six feet.
Are along this, this area here.
Yep.
Some of them are five to six feet, um, bagged and burr-lapped according to what they.
Five to six feet tall?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, to start with, you'll have some that are certainly there. Others are, are lower, uh, lower bushes certainly fill in, but, um, they've got a pretty substantial amount of them.
Okay. And my last question was, is anything gonna be done to the stone walls along the path Dave was talking about? Uh, from here?
Yeah.
These stone walls, especially the walls that's gonna be right up next to those two minutes.
Right, right. Maybe, uh, I wish you could see them. Uh, we don't show any grading or, or work necessary in that particular area, in this particular area here, so until we get up to this area where we certainly have to, uh, work with it.
I was curious because of how close they are to those, those buildings.
I don't, I don't think we have to do that. I mean, if anything, it's probably on this side, you know, that like.
Right.
But certainly not this side, and not that I know of. That's a common wall, so we wouldn't think.
Okay, that was, those were my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any other butters that would love to be heard regarding this application? Any members of the public in general? Yes, please, come on up. Everyone's so polite, they're raising their hands tonight. That's very nice.
Yes, yes. Alright. My name's Ellen Jaguerre and I live at fifty-two Prospect Street.
Well.
And I was just concerned about the lighting on the back of our property. We're the ones that own the swimming pool.
Mm-hmm.
That you have depicted. I just wondered if that light is gonna shine down into the back of our property, um, the street lights?
Um, you're, you're on this, on the corner?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
We do have some lighting, uh, lights showing on lighting there. I can show you what the effect would be. There will be a light here.
Okay.
And one there. You will see them. I mean, you will see the lights.
Okay.
But the net effect of that, uh, light is mostly going in the, in the opposite direction. You will get some back with.
It is, I'm sure.
But it, it does zero out certainly right at your property line, so there's no.
Oh, okay, good.
Increase of, you know, I mean, I'm not saying you won't see the, see the light.
Well, that's alright. Yeah, I just didn't want my, the back of my property.
I don't, I don't believe it.
Unless we're having a barbecue or something.
I don't believe it's gonna be. The intent is, these are to throw the light, you know.
Back to, oh, okay, good.
But, but according to these numbers, they're, they've zeroed out and there's your property line right here, so there's no overlap, so.
Yeah, okay.
Not saying you won't see the light, but.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be certainly very strong.
Yeah.
And it meets the requirements of the town.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other members of the public would like to be heard? Last call. Alright, we'll close the public hearing, seven oh three and a half, um. Can we hear from the staff on this, please?
Uh, we have your staff recommendations with you. Um, we are recommending approval. Uh, I do wanna draw our attention to, to items here on the, on the staff review on the first page under the site plan regulation compliance review under number four. Water Department and the Fire Department are, are still, um, negotiating with the applicant on a couple of, uh, details. And, um, the, the same issue up, up rises again under part two E, the Laconia Water Works with the final water line. Uh, with approval from the Water Works and the, and the Fire Department. We do not see this as a reason to delay or deny the application. If for some reason these issues cannot be resolved, they will not be able to do the project period. So, uh, there's no reason not to proceed with this application tonight.
What are the, um, what are the issues that are presenting themselves?
There's a, there's a water pressure issue they need to resolve, probably with some type of a pumping system. And then ex- exactly what kind of a sprinkler system that they're gonna put into the cottages has not been determined. And because of that, exactly what they're gonna do with the water lines, are they gonna split them? Are they gonna have separate meters and those kinds of things need to be resolved? These are very minor technical details that, like I said, if they can't be resolved to everyone's satisfaction, particularly Water Works and Fire, then there is no project. And the applicant's aware of that and they know that, so that's why I say there's really no reason to delay this. They, they'll resolve those issues or they won't, and if they do, then we're good to go. If they don't, then we don't have a project period. For the cottages, anyway.
Okay. Anything else?
Is the pavilion a separate entity?
Uh, I mean, it's all part of one, uh, one application here, but, uh, as far as I know, these issues do not relate to the pavilion aspect of it. These are strictly for the cottages.
The water pressure and the sprinklers won't affect that?
Yeah, they don't, I don't think they need to sprinkle a little of the pavilion and, and they just need enough water up there to provide, you know, toilet flushing and that kinda stuff.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions for staff? Alright, well sensing then, I guess we could entertain a motion at this time.
For some reason, I'm not getting the, um, recommendations, all the recommendations up on the screen here.
Yeah. I don't have time finding them, too.
I don't know what's, what's going on. I'm getting from three conditions applicable during and after construction, but nothing before that.
Yep.
I don't know if everybody else is having that problem.
It seems like the pages are loading very lowly, very slowly.
I lost my page.
I just watched yours all together, right?
Okay. Oh, no wonder, Dave. He's got his going this way, we got ours going that way.
See, this has been happening.
I've been sideways all, all my life.
He put them sideways for us, that's why.
When I scrolled to the end to try to find them, oh, look, there's some. There's three. So I'm actually in pages one and two. Yeah, that, that's the same issue I got.
It's probably a website problem.
Would you like me to, uh, briefly review them for you?
Well, I've got them now on Rob's. I've got the conditions here.
Okay.
Oh, there you go. And remember, we've adopted the rules, so you only have to mention the standard conditions. You don't have to read them on. Cause that was, I think, last week, we, last month, we, didn't we adopt that rule change? Okay.
Okay, well, I, I have a couple of comments. I'd like to know that the stone walls that are currently there leading back to this project that come out of, that comes off the path of the roadway now. Between, um, from Prospect or Cole to the, to the actual project itself, the rear of, um, the Jaguerres property. Uh, that stone wall, one of the stone wall on the left runs the entire length of the Jaguerres property and ends, um, right at the, where I think they're gonna put the driveway, uh, or the roadway. Uh, that in some configuration to that. I'd like to know that those two stone walls, to the extent possible, there's one on the right and one on the left, they're really, they're old, they're broken down, but they're really nice. I'd like to know that, that they're gonna stay there. Um, and if you're gonna wanna do something with it, that you provide everybody notice. That you're gonna do some, that you're gonna do something with those stone walls so that people will have an opportunity to say something about that or, or do something about that.
Steve Smith for the record. It's my understanding that those stone walls, they're not gonna disturb them. When we were putting the sewer down through there, there had been a different question on whether they'd get disturbed during the sewer construction.
Well, I, I can understand that kind of.
Originally, we were gonna run the sewer down there. We're not running it down there now. It's not pat, we don't show it as proposed to be disturbed. It's my understanding, I don't believe it's gonna be disturbed. Certainly, if there's a change of path, then we can come back and tell the board, but the only place that they might be disturbed is where those couple of houses are, right near the house itself, above where you're talking about.
Yep.
But there's no plans to, to destroy those stone walls. They, they, that's one of their paths, one of their trails up through there that everybody loves.
Okay. Uh, I'm not sure we need to put that in the conditions, but I, I, I would like some kinds of assurances with respect to that. I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen in the future with respect to those stone walls. And I don't know how to describe them for the record, except the two stone walls, robe, running along the path, running along the roadway now.
Certainly, the stone wall that is, um, forms the, uh, joint property line with the Jaguerres. That, that cannot be touched by the Taylor, uh, property because they, that, that wall would be jointly owned. It's a shared wall, so they, they can't, you just touch that.
Are we sure it's a shared wall?
Yeah, the property line basically go right down the middle of it. The, the one on the right, um, it is our intention and, and their stated intention not to be disturbing it. Obviously, that is true until you get up to near where the first cottage is.
Right.
But from a visual standpoint, from the corner of Prospect and Cole, the idea of looking up through the woods and seeing, you know, this old woods path with stone walls on either side, that, that, uh, visual would still be intact. If you want us to make a note that, uh, to keep an eye on that and to, to make sure that that is, is remained intact, we have no problem doing that.
I, I, I would like that, and I'm not saying that there aren't, there may not be good reasons for doing something in the future. I just want people to have notice that that's gonna happen and have an opportunity to respond to that.
Sure.
Um, the second question I have is, it doesn't seem like you're gonna use that path, and I'm talking about the path with the two walls, the going, coming off that as any kind of vehicular access, is that right?
That's correct.
Alright.
We can pass that back down. It works if it's tipped. Okay, are there any other suggestions or additions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve with the conditions, uh, with, that the staff has said that the Water Department and the Fire Department have, uh, the water a pressure issue. And the Fire Department needs to have a corrected, uh, sprinkler system approved before they have a final, um, application, that, that application go forward. And for PL two oh one eight zero one zero four SP, four thirty-five Union Ave Presidential Cottages and Woodside Pavilion. Um, but I accept it as, as presented to us tonight with those conditions and staff recommendations.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Jenna. Any of us the move, movement's intent to incorporate the recommendations listed under Roman one, one through four?
Correct.
Okay. And the standard conditions set forth in Roman two. Generally applicable conditions.
With the, with the planning department to make a note with respect to the walls?
Yep, we'll take care of that.
Okay, they'll make another that, alright. Okay, was that the, just to clarify it for the record?
Yep.
Alright. Any discussion on the motion? We have a motion, we have a second. Um, all those in favor? Opposed? And carries unanimously, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. You need this back? How come you're getting it and I'm not? Was it that Robert Frost said about walls?
You can keep it just in case, but I'll get ready for the next one just in case.
Try tipping it, Dave, like he did.
Okay, so. We are at. PL twenty eighteen zero one one F two SP, nine fifty Main Street, the Wimbsaki I, um, uh, business. Uh, it's proposal to raise an office building and garage and correct and, and construct a new office building on the same site with, um, parking, landscaping and so on. We could hear from the applicant.
Good evening, I'm, uh, Paul McManus, and, uh, uh, thank you very much, uh, for hearing my application. Um, I, um, I've been practicing here with my wife, Catherine Zagroba, uh, since the early eighties and, uh, uh, joined a practice with Dr. Snow, who's been here since the mid-sixties. And, uh, uh, we very much enjoyed our time here in, in Laconia practicing, uh, optometry and eye care. And would like to be able to keep our practice here for, uh, a while to come. And, uh, one of the constraints we have is limitations of the building size, uh, limitations regarding handicapped access. Uh, regarding, uh, physical ability to have, you know, proper, uh, facilities for patients, instrumentation, that new instrumentation is available now, has to be placed in certain, uh, somewhere within the office. And, uh, and the size is not really quite conducive to that. So our proposal would be to, to, uh, to expand the building. If we had ability to do it with the present structure, we would, but it doesn't lend itself well to doing that. So the, uh, the plan was to, uh, to replace the existing building with a new building that was conforming to current standards, be all on one level, one-story building. It's actually a one-story building, not a two-story building, but, um, uh, and that's, uh, it'd be easily accessible for people and have more space and room to be able to practice. The, um, uh. This, Mr. Temple will be here to explain the details of the, the site plan work that we proposed. And, uh, if you have questions, you're certainly welcome to ask and, uh, uh, and, uh, very excited about the project. It's something that we've looked forward to, cause we've wanted to keep our practice in Laconia. We've been here for, for thirty-six years and, uh, and, and didn't wanna have to move to a location that would be, uh, let's say, less convenient for our patients and also maybe in a different town. So we're very happy where we are, so. Thank you very much for listening and if you have any questions, I'll be here to ask, or, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McManus.
I'm Bernie Temple with, working with John Rokee Consulting. Um, we are, did the site plan for this project. Um, as Paul said, our intent is to pretty much completely raise the site. We're gonna remove the garage, um, no, does the pointer point up there? Yes, it does. The building will be torn down, the existing pavement will be all, uh, removed. Um, we're gonna go back in and reconstruct the site. We're gonna realign the parking. Uh, the existing driveway will go from like thirty-five feet down to a twenty-four-foot driveway in. The building itself, even though it's a new building, it's only like three hundred and twenty-two square feet larger than the existing. You know, and the re- reconfiguring it will make it work better. Um, the parking is all gonna be over on the left-hand side here with a handicap right next to the entrance wa- rampway. Uh, drainage from the existing site, I'll go back to page one here, or page two, um. Pretty much the whole site, including the roadway, all ended up down in this one catch basin down here and goes right out into the municipal service, sewer or drainage service. Um, what we're proposing is to put a, uh, pervious pavement down along here with a curbing. And probably eighty percent of this site will be going into it. The only remaining site that won't go into the impervious pavement area and get infiltrated into the ground. Will be the backside of the building, which will follow through a grass swale around and over into the basin itself. Um, this underground system is gonna infiltrate pretty much the ten-year, the ten-year completely, the twenty-five-year, most of it. We're reducing the flows by over a half a CFS for all of, all storms. The, uh, obviously the site is gonna be serviced by municipal water and sewer. We're still working with the, uh. still working with the fire department, the water department, and the sewer department. We are proposing, I can see a bit up there. We do have a lighting plan, and we're meeting the regulations, you know, dark sky compliant, nothing spilling over the edge. Landscaping, we do have a landscape plan, which is back here. We've got landscaping, you know, pretty, pretty well landscaped compared to what was there. And that's pretty much it. It's going to be a lot, lot nicer site, more, you know, aligned. The parking lot's going to be aligned, more convenient for the people getting in and out of the building. That's it. Any, any questions?
A couple. The west boundary, the back, is, is there an existing privacy fence back there?
On the west boundary?
Or is it on the neighbor's land?
There is a, there is.
Six-foot bamboo metal fence.
Yes.
Looks like it's on the neighbor's land. You're not changing the grade or anything particularly?
The grade is, we're, no, we're not changing, we're trying to match in all the way around on this property. It's very, very flat site, so it's, in order to make it work, we didn't, we couldn't, couldn't change the grade much at all.
Right. Well, it looks like the elevation, from the elevations that you provided, that it's architecturally similar to the neighborhood and.
Yeah. I do have.
Here I say an improvement over the existing.
I do have architectural plans here, which we can.
Was it ranch, wasn't it originally, the building?
I believe it's.
It's split level.
It's split level.
It has seven different levels.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. That's a little hard to get ADA compliant, isn't it? Without putting that some. This is relatively flat site anywhere, right?
Yeah.
And you're going to improve. The parking's going to be on the south?
The parking is on the southeast property type of thing that is. The bound, the, we do have an asphalt curb, and we are providing an overflow down at the end, at the lower end of this. You know, I know the guys before had an, had to put an overflow in their pervious pavement system, and actually, I do have an overflow built into the system. We don't expect it to hap, be used, but just in case.
And the snow is going to basically just get pushed to the back of the lot, right?
The snow will be pushed to the back of the lot. There's not a lot of snow, you know, snow storage room. If there is too much, we will have to probably remove it from the site.
Yeah, or you'll lose spaces.
Or we're going to hope for these six-inch rains falls and everything goes.
Because you have the handicap spaces at the back, so.
And the back, right, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant from the board? All right, the staff?
Staff is recommending approval. This has gone through a couple of TRCs, and they had a couple of minor issues that they went through the zoning board and got variances for. So, everything is lined up, and they're, they're ready to go, and we are recommending approval.
What they need, just to be curious, what they need a variances for?
Setbacks for parking.
Setback for parking.
And a step, side setback for one, I think there was.
One corner of the building.
This, this corner over here, I believe, is, the existing building was over and the proposed building was over.
Got you. All right. Is the intent to, when you're raising a building, are you moving to a temporary location?
Yeah.
Yeah, for however long it takes to figure, four to six months or whatever. So, we'll be like camping out.
The big tent, the big, the big tent I practice might be up.
There's a lot of trailers and lawns you could use that you can pull up here.
There's three hundred and fifty of them just sitting there, just waiting to be moved.
I know the answer to this question, but I assume that you're satisfied with the drainage and how they're going to deal with it in terms of, at least from the back along, down along the backside of the property, that's not going to be.
Absolutely, and this plan has been reviewed by DPW, and the, their tie into the existing storm drainage, they're, they're very happy with the whole situation.
I, I say that just as a comment, because we're not talking about ten-year storms or fifty-year storms. We're having a hundred-year storms every two years now, so I just want everybody to be aware of that.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. We're going to open the public hearing at seven twenty-five PM. Are there any members of the public or butters that would like to be heard on this application? I don't see anybody back there, so I'm going to close the public hearing at seven twenty-five point five, and entertain a motion from the board.
I'll, I'll make the motion that application PL 2018-0112SP be given conditional approval upon the staff recommendations, one, two, three, and four. That's all we have to do these days, right?
Pretty much, yeah. I like brevity. Is there a second to?
I second it. Second.
So, made by Mr. Bounds, seconded by Mr. Brooke. Any further discussion? I'll put it to a vote. Then all who's in favor? Opposed? All right, consider it approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Hope you have a nice summer in the big tent. All right, great. This could be that, the good summer for that long European vacation you guys have been talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When we come back, it'll be all done, right?
Absolutely. You would, how could you not, you know, you don't have anything to worry about. You're in good hands.
Well, we might have a few decisions to make along the way. I, I'm good.
That's what teleconferencing is all about.
I don't think our patients will appreciate it.
You can Skype with them.
Good luck.
That's true. Yeah, it's hard to take a break from a prac, practice, isn't it? An active practice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a good, good clientele and patients, and so we just want to make them happy.
I've heard many good things, ma'am. So, good luck. Okay. So, I guess the only other item I can see is the request for the continuance. Do we have to vote on that?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so we have a request from the applicant for a continuance of the application on PL 2018-0080SU, the New Hope Drive proposal, and I don't see Patrick here. I thought I saw him earlier. He's not. Can't think of any reason, so moved. Second?
To March, to March fifth, correct?
To March fifth, yes, indeed, to the next meeting. Any discussion on that motion? All who's in favor? It's continued to March fifth. Any new business? I don't think we have any old business. The planning department report. We're always anxious to hear about that.
As some of you know, the master plan steering committee has been meeting, and we are continuing to discuss and try to formulate some formal recommendations as a follow-up to the adoption of the master plan. State school property is ongoing. It will be ongoing for quite some time. There have really been no decisions made yet up, up there, so.
Is there a scheduled meetings already for that commission? Or are they just doing them?
They, they usually schedule them one at a time.
I don't think there's a meeting scheduled now. I think they're waiting for.
Could you get, whenever a meeting is scheduled, could you get a notice out to the members of the planning board, just in case any of us would like to.
We can do that, yep.
Go. I keep saying I want to go to one of these meetings and just say hi, at least. And I forget, when is it? Have you heard anything from the Lakes Region Planning Commission?
I was going to cover that later, but we can do that now. As you know, we have three, we have, the city has allocated three commissioners to be on the Lakes Region Planning Commission. Dean Anson from the Conservation Commission is one of our commissioners. Peter has volunteered to be a commissioner, and because you also have to be a resident, we are, and, and Rob has agreed to serve as a commissioner, if that is what the board would like to do.
Okay.
And then we will arrange for a city council to do their appointment. I don't believe you need to go in for, if it's a recommendation of the planning board, I don't believe you need to go in for an interview. They just need to be put on the agenda.
Do we have, do we have to take a formal vote to recommend?
I, I would, I would say that it would be a good idea for the board to take a formal vote, to have Peter and Rob as the, to be nominated for the new commissioners, and then we'll forward that to the city council.
All right. So, the motion is Peter and Rob for appointment to the Lakes Region Planning Commission. Recommend that to the city council.
I'm, I'm good with that.
All right. And all who's in favor?
Don't you need a second?
Opposed? I heard a second somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, lightly. It was in the wind. I whispered it.
It was a whispered second. Actually, I think I made the motion.
It was a mental.
You seconded it. Sorry to interrupt, Dean.
Sorry, that's it.
That was it?
That was it.
All right. That covers everything, I think. City council?
The, the only update is you've already gotten from Dean with respect to the ongoing master plan committee stuff, and you're, you're part of that, so that's the only update. There's nothing coming down from the council with respect to any requests that I'm aware of.
Is there anything, any council business pertaining to the colonial coming up?
The answer is yes. I think the, we'll be addressing the colonial in part in the first, second council meeting of February. So, it, it may be, you know, I'm old and see now. It may be that we're going to do it at the first council meeting in February, which would be next, well, second Monday in, in February, so.
Yeah. And when is the, what's the budget schedule? How does that, can you refresh from my memory about?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, there's a, there are sta, stages. When is the manager's budget, has that been submitted and?
No, the manager's budget has not been submitted. I would expect to see that sometime in February or early March. By statute, we have to adopt it by the second Monday, our second meeting in July. I think we can push it off to the next meeting if we need it, but that process is going to start gearing up now. We'll be going into additional sessions to listen to the various departments, but I would anticipate that we'll have some kind of a, a better idea of where our budget is going to be in June and July, and we'll adopt one, as we're required to do, in either July or early August.
It'd be interesting to see. One of the ideas that has come up is to do some fundraising to, to repair our, our Native American friend in Opechka Park, and it occurred to me that maybe the city could appropriate some funds for that, because the more we look at it, the more expensive it gets, because we need to get some giant crane to do this if we're going to do it right, so that it doesn't damage the track. We can't bring it, a crane across the track. We need a crane big enough so that it can sit in the parking lot and reach out, grab the thing, pick it up, swing it, and put it on a flatbed.
You know, I appreciate your enthusiasm for that Indian, and, you know, I grew up across the street from that park, right across the street from that park. The Indian wasn't there then.
Well, that was during the Lincoln administration.
That was, no, no, I think it was prior to that. So, the, but you're, you're going to have to do a lot of convincing of me that you can salvage that thing, and I, and I mean that. That, as far as the information I have, is that the Indian is rotten to the core, and that if you move it, it's going to come crumbling down, and that's the information I have. I'm, I, I'm not a pro. I don't know, but that's what I've got. So, if there's going to be any money that I'm even going to consider recommending to save the Indian, I better know that that Indian is savable.
I hope your insurance company is more generous with you when you start crumbling.
I've already started that process.
The doctor said it's crumbling.
I'm already gone, the walls of, the walls of David Bounds are crumbling down right now.
Falling apart.
It's that bad? Is it, is it a, is it a public health, safety hazard? If it comes down the way he's talking?
I don't know.
Somebody stand next to it and it tips over and kills somebody?
I think he, I think he's exaggerating the problem quite a bit, but it's all right. We don't know. We obviously don't know. We're not going to go poking at it like a couple of amateur city councilmen or something.
Well, let's get out with a stick.
Yeah, go out with a stick. Well, I think Armin and Bob went out and did some borings or something a couple of years back, and came up with, you know, soft wood inside. I don't think you have to be genius to figure out that there's some rot going on there, but to do anything right is going to be expensive. To do anything half-assed is going to be dangerous. So, somewhere between the two, hopefully. The only reason I bring it up is that we could do fundraising, but it would be a nice incentive for the fundraising if we knew that the city was going to at least appropriate maybe five grand towards it, because just a crane alone could be over ten.
Not that I'm discouraging it, but this isn't exactly a planning board issue.
Well, it isn't. Where else am I going to get you on the spot?
You know, I, I'm, I'm not discouraging it, you know? Yeah, anybody can bring up anything they want.
You'd feel differently about it if you had a telephone pull up your butt. Okay, so, is there any other nonsense or business that we can bring up? Anything off topic is fine, I guess, tonight. No, all right. Sensing none, how about a motion to adjourn then?
Yeah, let's adjourn.
All right. And then a second?
I second it.
All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Jenna.
Shut us down.
I didn't actually officially say that she was seated. You did in the minutes? Thank you, you read my mind.